And. Welcome everyone to our special meeting of the Monterey City Council. Before we call it to order, I'm going to ask our indomod to go. Assistant City Manager Nat Roger Nasasera to explain how folks can participate at this meeting. So Nat, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two ways to participate in our city council meetings. The first is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second is to call into the meeting using your telephone. To join the meeting, you can find either the link or the phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. And since the meeting is already started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, please dial toll free eight three three five six eight 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 six four. And then enter the meeting ID, which is one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And when you're prompted to enter a participant ID, you can press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at Monterey.org forward slash public meetings. To make a public comment today, using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And if you've dialed in by phone, you can press star nine and then unmute yourself by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. We'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. And we ask that individuals please stay within a three minute time limit established for today's meeting. And we'll be also showing a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom or by telephone, the timer is accurate with no delay. This meeting is also being recorded on YouTube. It has a 10 second delay and also on Comcast channel 25 with a 90 second delay. And as always, we look forward to receiving public comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nat, as always, well done. And we'll call our meeting to order and is our inestimable city clerk Clementine Bonner Klein going to show us a flag so we can do the pledge? Alright, so if you will join me in the pledge of allegiance, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks so much. First and only item on our agenda is a presentation from a very knowledgeable and kind legal team. A presentation on the Brown Act, Conflicts of Interest and the Public Records Act. Just for the public's information, every two years, each council member and some commissioners take a conflicts of interest ethics classics call. Actually, I find it very interesting because it does review many of the rules that we about live by and abide by and it's really make sure that everything done reflects what important value driver in the city of Monterey, and that's transparency. And I think one of the big takeaways I always get from the the online two hour course is even if it's not a legal conflict of interest, if it's perceived, that's where you use your discretion and you probably want to recuse yourself. So there's the legal side and there's perceived side as well. So I always have that as a good takeaway. So Hans, so we go directly to our knowledgeable and kind legal team and Chrissy Davy.
Great, thank you. We are excited to give you this presentation today. It is on a very, three very important topics, the Brown Act, Conflicts of Interest and the Public Records Act. I will be presenting to you as well as Assistant City Attorney Karen Salama and Deputy City Attorney Ryan Donlin. So I will go ahead and share my screen. And we'll get started, so. Um. If it'll. Here we go. Yes, and the main takeaway, if nothing else, is that we are here for you, the City Attorney's Office. If you come away from this just being able to issue spot and recognize when there might be a legal question or a legal concern, you can certainly raise that with your staff member on your border commission or the city council and certainly contact the city attorney's office. And we are here to assist you. So let's get started on the Brown Act first. And just as a historical note, back in 1951, there was a reporter, Mike Harris, who did a 10, 10 part series expose on the secret government. And this was reported in the Chronicle. It was already prohibited to have closed door meetings, but this series done by Mr. Harris really exposed that there were meetings still happening behind locked doors, there were meetings happening in secret. The public was not aware of what was happening. And the rationale for that at the time was that they wanted to be efficient. And they also wanted to be able to talk about sensitive matters and private without public scrutiny. So along comes the Ralph M. Brown Act, which was signed into law in 1953. It's been amended a number of different times, but the primary purpose is to ensure that public meetings are open and transparent and accessible to the public. So that is the basic rule of the Brown Act. All meetings of the legislative body, which in our case here today is the city council, it can also be other boards and commissions of the city of a local agency shall be open and public and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the city council or their legislative body of the city. The purpose again is to make, allow the public to have access to decision making, to further public oversight of decision making. And there are some very narrow exceptions for closed sessions under the Brown Act, such as for pending or potential litigation, labor negotiations and bargaining with the bargaining units and as well as real property transactions, leasing, price in terms of leases. So there's some very narrow exceptions to the Brown Act when the city council can meet in a closed session. But the general rule is transparency. So who is subject to the Brown Act? Newly elected or appointed members of a covered body. And this is true even prior to being sworn into office. So let's say the election is on Tuesday, November 3rd, and you are the winning council member or mayor of that office. The Brown Act applies to you on November 4th, even though you have not been sworn into office yet. In our case here, the Brown Act applies to the city council, to the planning commission, architectural review committee, historic preservation commission, recreation and parks, library, and so on. And then more uniquely, which may not be commonly known, is that it does also apply to business improvement districts and standing committees. A standing committee is a committee that consists of less than a quorum of the city council. And it has a continuing jurisdiction over a subject matter. So the Brown Act applies to those committees as well. Now, you may think that a meeting and the definition of a meeting is a pretty straightforward concept. In today's day and age with technology especially, it can be a little more challenging and there can be for some traps for the and weary or the unwise. So we're going to try to alert you to those today. A meeting includes any gathering of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and location to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action upon any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. And what this means is no informal meetings are allowed. A majority of the city council cannot use a series of communications of any kind, either directly or through intermediaries to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. So this more commonly, or what could happen that you have to be aware of, is a daisy chain. So there you see five daisies, you can pretend each daisy is a council member where one council member passes along to the next council member, hey, I really like measure P, the concept of measure P, I think it should pass, I think we should support it. And then council member number two passes that on to number three, oh, hey, council member A and council member B, they both agree that we should support this measure. And I think it's a great idea as well. And then it gets communicated along the chain until there's been a consensus developed. And this is happening outside of a public process, outside of public access. And that is not permissible. A second type of a serial meeting is the hub and spoke concept. You might think of a wheel of a bicycle where there's a center and spokes going out to the wheel itself. Or that little picture there, you'll see there can be one intermediary, it may or may not be a council member. It could be a member of the public, for example, who communicates with people separately. So the council members in this scenario are not communicating amongst themselves. The consensus is being developed through an intermediary. So the person in the middle is getting information and passing it along separately to each of the spokes, so to speak, and a consensus is developed that way, which is also not permissible. And then finally, email and technology can create a serial meeting, sometimes inadvertently. And I know we're all very mindful of this. And that's why we discouraging reply all to an email, for example, because there could be a series of emails that by the time you get to the end of the communication, there's been a consensus of a majority of the city council members and that could result in a, in a Brown Act issue. So it's something just to be aware of. Exemptions, individual contacts are okay. And you can meet with your constituents, you can meet with members of the public. That's in part, part of being a public official, that's an important piece of your public government work here as a representative. You can also all attend conferences and seminars, that is not prohibited. And also open and publicize meetings of another body of the city or another agency. So if a quorum of the city council ends up at a county board of supervisors meeting, that is okay, that is not a violation of the Brown Act. As long as you don't between each other discuss city business, that should be agendized back here at City Hall. So there's a new law that everyone should be interested in. This is unique and it's sort of the Brown Act trying to catch up with technology. And so AB 992 is a new application and it applies to commenting, retweeting, liking, disliking, responding with emojis, or reposting on social media platforms, which includes Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, blogs, TikTok, Reddit, Snapchat. And I'm sure there's a whole bunch of others that I'm not even aware of what they're called or what their names are. But so this new law, AB 992, applies to those platforms. And a member of a legislative body may communicate with the public by using these platforms. So Mayor Clyde may, for example, have a Facebook page and then post something about a cannabis workshop that's going to be happening in the city. That's perfectly acceptable, that's okay, it's allowed to be done. The new rule, however, what is not permitted is in response to that Facebook posting by Mayor Clyde, council member Williamson, for example, cannot do a like, thumbs up, or an emoji, or make a comment on it. So a member of the city council cannot respond directly to any communication posted or shared by another member regarding agency business on an internet based social media platform. And so this includes no likes, no thumbs up, no emojis or other symbols. So this is a new development in the law. Another important component of the Brown Act is agenda posting. You need to post regular meetings 72 hours in advance. Special meetings 24 hours in advance and they need to be posted in an accessible location. And the city council or board of commission cannot take action on an item that is not on the agenda. And that sounds easy enough, but I will note that at one point in time when Bernie Sanders was here visiting for, when he was running for president, we had an upcoming city council meeting and agendas were posted as required. What we hadn't anticipated was the Secret Service really blocking off access to the public posting of that agenda. So that was something we had to contemplate, okay, did we run afoul somehow of the 72 hour advanced meeting notice? And it turned out we had not, it was all fine, but it just goes to show that we have to always be thinking of these things and furthering public access and not hindering it. So each item of business that's to be transacted or discussed has to have a brief general description on the agenda. And that is to give the public notice of what the city council or the border commission, as the case may be, is going to be discussing. And the public must also have an opportunity to address any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the, of the legislative body. So we always have a public comment period, which doesn't have to be on any item on the agenda. It could be on anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. And then also they have to be able to comment on agenda items before action is taken. So if there's going to be a vote on whether to pass a a sales tax measure, there needs to be public comment on that item before there's action taken, just as an example. And then finally, agendas and public comments, you cannot prohibit criticism of acts or policies or process. So a member of the public can come and sometimes have opinionated or maybe harsh words. And that's perfectly acceptable, that's the First Amendment protections that they're afforded. So criticisms are completely allowed. Again, participation at meetings, locations must be ADA accessible. The city council chambers, we've not been there in quite a while, but, but those are, it was remodeled to be ADA accessible. Also on public participation, the public cannot be required to state his or her or their name or address. And we can ask them to and they might, but there's no law that requires them to state their name or their address. And attendees also have the right to record proceedings by audio or video. So at a meeting, the chair cannot ask people to stop recording or stop videotaping a public meeting that's permissible under the law. So there's been quite a few changes with public participation in COVID-19. And I have to say, you heard from our Assistant City Manager Nat Roger Nasafira. And he worked diligently with Clementine, our city clerk, and also the city manager and our IT department. There was a lot of work that went into this. And you probably heard in his announcement how to participate in our city council meetings and our other board and commission meetings during these times of COVID. The reason we're allowed to be discussing this topic here today on a, on a remote platform by Zoom and not in a council chambers is because of the governor's executive orders, which suspended large parts, portions of the Brown Act to allow teleconferencing meetings. So normally a teleconferencing meeting, you'd have to post an agenda where you were located. So let's say council member Smith is in Texas. He would have to post the agenda outside of a publicly accessible area and allow the public to come to that location and comment on the meeting as is being conducted telephonically. So rules like that were suspended by executive order of the governor to allow us to function the way we've been functioning largely for the last year. And this is all keeping in mind that the city must allow the public to observe and address the meeting telephonically or otherwise electronically. And the governor gave public entities broad discretion on how to implement this as long as the intention is to maximize transparency and provide public access to meetings. And here in the city of Monterey, we've enabled that with using channel 25, our AMP, and Zoom and YouTube. And we also take email comments and live public comments. So we've really furthered the public access despite this pandemic. There is some pending legislation on this topic. So these are things we are tracking. AB 703 would allow virtual meetings indefinitely. Not make it mandatory, but it would allow it indefinitely and permanently remove the current rules that limit virtual meetings or require public attendance at physical locations. And I think this is in recognition of the fact that we've all maybe limped along a little bit initially, but have become very proficient and efficient at running meetings virtually. And so this legislation would allow that practice to continue. Otherwise, the governor's executive orders that we're operating under right now are going to terminate and sunset once the pandemic ends or the state of emergency is, is lifted. AD 361 would keep the Brown Act teleconferencing requirements intact, but it would allow virtual meetings during declared emergencies. So in other words, we default back to the old rule, but this governor's executive orders would be more or less codified and could be utilized during a declared emergency. And then the final piece of legislation that's pending is AB 339, which would require, so not authorized, but require virtual access as well as live translation services for languages spoken by 5% or more of the city's population. And so if AB 339 passes, we would be having potentially live city council meetings, but also having a mandate to have virtual access as well as live translation services. violations and remedies, criminal penalties, you won't see that very often. And I think it's a rare instance, but it's just good to be aware of that if a member of a border commission or a city council member intends on purpose, like on purpose, deprives the public of information, it could be a misdemeanor. More commonly, there could be civil penalties, such as an action by the district attorney or other party to invalidate any action taken at an improper meeting. And if successful attorneys, fees could be awarded and those could be quite expensive. At high hourly rates for the attorneys. Given the nature of the violation, if there is one, so if it's a violation that takes place either at a meeting or outside of a meeting, there's two different timelines on when the council would be given it or the border commission a chance to cure and correct. It's either a 30 day timeline or a 90 day timeline, depending on the circumstances. And so upon receipt of such a demand, there could be a review of whether, okay, did we, do we need to have a do over and make sure we're having a transparent public process? So that is a precondition to a lawsuit. And so that's it for me for the Brown Act. And now Assistant City Attorney Karen Salama will be presenting on the FPPC and Conflicts of Interests.
And before you do that, Karen, if you'll just hold up a minute. I, I appreciate the presentation and also one of the slides where you explained that this is for all of our commissions. And I wanted to thank, we have many of our commissioners present. And we're going to have an opportunity to ask our caring city council members and our conscientious commissioners to ask questions. When we're done with the presentation, we'll include them in in that deliberations. And so save your questions if that's what you prefer to have the whole presentation and it sounds like that you would like to do that. So.
Either way is fine, we can, we can take the, it's at your, your pleasure, Mayor. If you would like us to take questions as we're going, that's fine with me.
Well, why, why don't we wait if everyone doesn't mind? Let's just wait, jot your questions down. I have one or two that we run into occasionally. But again, I wanted to point out that our city council's here as well as a lot of commissioners. And I very much appreciate them being here with us. So with that, we'll go to Karen Salama, who is going to tell us about the NCIP's favorite subject, right?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll start sharing my screen. Okay, so I'm Karen Salama and I'll be covering the FPPC and Conflicts of Interest portion of this presentation. And the California's Political Reform Act is enforced and interpreted by the FPPC, the Fair Political Practices Commission. And it's designed to address the financial conflicts of interests of public officials in two ways. The first of these is the disclosure of officials' economic interests. And second, it prohibits participation in making decisions that the official knows or has reason to know will result in a material financial effect on one of the official's economic interests. So we'll dive. So we'll dive into both of these aspects. The first of these is disclosure. And this is a general principle to further government transparency, and it requires public officials to disclose their financial interests. In the city, this would include the mayor and council members as well as members of boards, commissions, and committees, and then also designated staff members. And so all of these individuals must file a statement of economic interests, which is also known as the Form 700. Every year, that's due on April 1st, which is coming up shortly. And our city clerk wanted to remind everyone that if they haven't done so, they should get in their Form 700. If you need help filling out that form, the FPPC has some very helpful instructional booklets, or of course, you can contact our office. The Form 700 requires disclosure of financial interests, both of the public official and their spouse and dependent children, business entities that they have an interest in, real property, other sources of income, gifts that they've received in the prior year, as well as charitable fundraising they've done. And once filed, the Form 700s are public documents. So I wanted to spend a brief minute on gifts. The Political Reform Act regulates gifts. As a basic question, what is a gift under the act? That's any payment or other benefit that confers a personal benefit for which a public official does not provide payment or services of an equal or greater value. So the act provides that public officials must disclose gifts over $50 from a single source in a year and may not accept gifts from a single source totaling more than $520 in a calendar year. Of course, there are some exceptions to these rules, such as gifts you receive from family members or when you take your best friend out for lunch for their birthday, and then they take you out for lunch for your birthday. So in those types of situations, the FPPC generally views the gift as being kind of a wash over the course of a year. However, gift violations may result in criminal prosecution or substantial fines by the FPPC. So it is something to be aware of. I'd have included a couple examples here. I thought the prison warden was interesting because he did timely disclose that he had received lodging, tickets, and meals, but he did not report that those same tickets, lodging, et cetera, have been also given to his spouse. And once you added in the spouse's receipt of the gift, it exceeded the gift limitation. So it's just something to be aware of there. Turning to the second prong of the Political Reform Act, this deals with disqualification when an official does have a financial interest. So the basic rule is that no public official at any level of state or local government shall make, participate in making, or in any way attempt to use their official position to influence a governmental decision in which they know or have reason to know they have a financial interest. So how do you know if you have a disqualifying conflict of interest? You have to look at whether the decision coming before you as a public official will positively or negatively impact your income, business or employment, real property that you have an interest in, personal finances, general personal interests, or contracts you may be a part of. Real property is one that we often see come up as an issue. An official is considered to have a financial interest in property in which they, their spouse, their dependent children, or their agent have invested $2,000 or more. So if an official does have a financial interest in real property, then the FPPC has established several additional rules to determine if that official may participate in a decision impacting the property. So we'll dive into those. The first of these is the 500-foot rule. There's a regulatory presumption that a decision involving a property within 500 feet of an official's property will have a material impact on the official's interests. And then the official may not participate in decisions where their property is within 500 feet of the subject property unless they first obtain a written advice letter from the FPPC that the decision will have no measurable impact on the property. And that must be shown with clear and convincing evidence, which is a very high bar. The second category is for real property located 500 to 1,000 feet from the official's property. This is what I like to think of as kind of a gray area where there's not a presumption of either materiality or non-materiality. So if the official owns property within this 500 to 1,000-foot range, a decision will have a material impact on the official's property interest if the decision changes the development potential, income-producing potential, highest and best use, market value, or the character of the property by substantially altering traffic levels, intensity of use, parking views, privacy, noise levels, air quality. And you know, this is a complex analysis that the city attorney's office is happy to analyze and go over with you if your property falls within this range. And then if applicable, we can write to and request an opinion from the FPPC. Because only receiving an opinion from the FPPC will protect a public official who later is alleged to have violated the Political Reform Act. So the final category relating to property is for real property beyond 1,000 feet. And in that instance, the financial effect is presumed to be non-material. So there's no presumption of a conflict in that instance. Again, we have to use common sense because the presumption can be rebutted with clear and convincing evidence that the decision would actually have a substantial effect on the official's property. So you know, if, for example, 1,001 feet from your property is going to be an enormous new landfill, that may be something that would have a substantial effect on your property. So the 1,000-foot rule isn't an automatic, you know, hard and fast, but just generally will be able to participate in a decision. So there is an exception, of course. This is the public generally exception. An official still may participate in a decision if they have a conflict, if the decision's financial effect on a public official's financial interest is indistinguishable from its effect on the public generally, which is the case if the official establishes that a significant segment of the public is affected, and the effect on their financial interest is not unique compared to the effect on the significant segment. So that's kind of a mouthful there. So to unpack it, and this, I want to point out, the law here has changed in the last year. So now a significant segment is at least 25% of real property, commercial property, or residential property in the official's jurisdiction. Or, and the second part is the new addition, at least 15% of residential real property within the official's jurisdiction, if the only interest the official has in the decision is their primary residence. So it's either 25% if it's not your primary residence or 15% if only your primary residence is the real property involved. And again, we have to look at in the official's jurisdiction. So for the council, the planning commission, most of the city's boards and commissions, the jurisdiction is the entire city. And so that's what will be looked at to analyze the 25% or 15%. The NCIP, where they represent specific neighborhoods in the city. And the neighborhood the official is representing is the jurisdiction for purposes of the public generally's exception. So if an official does have a conflict of interest, and the decision, when the decision comes before you, you must identify the conflict on the record and leave the room. So in the past, you'd step down from the dais and physically leave the council chambers. Now you would leave our Zoom room. And prior to doing that, you would not discuss or vote on the matter or attempt to influence, you know, any of your colleagues. However, if the matter affected your own personal interest, you had a personal home remodel coming before the planning commission that you are sitting on, you are still allowed to speak on that, just as any member of the public would. You would step down from the dais, speak on it, and sit in the public area in that instance. I just, as a last bit of advice, you know, this presentation largely focused on financial conflicts of interest regulated by the Political Reform Act. However, there are other types of conflicts of interest that are really regulated by the common law or the government code. One example might be, you know, if you serve on another board of some other entity, and they had business that was coming before the city board or commission you serve on, that may present an issue even if it's not a financial interest. So again, in those situations, often that's very fact-specific. And we would encourage you to contact our office, and we can help address any of those issues. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan to address the Public Records Act.
And good evening, everyone. Let's see if I can successfully share my screen here. Is everyone with me? The California Public Records Act and why we care about it. So the basic requirement under the government code is writings constituting public records shall be timely disclosed to the public upon request unless there is a legally recognized exemption. And those underlined portions are the elements that I'm going to be addressing separately in this presentation. First, though, let's talk about the burden or the why we care part. Responding to Public Records Act requests involves many hundreds of employee hours each year. And actually, that's only speaking of the city attorney's office. I don't have data for the entire city, but I would feel comfortable in estimating that's probably in the order of thousands of employee hours. And this is not time that we receive compensation for from the requister or from the state government that mandates these requests. I bring that up because heating this advice could very well result in more efficient government, whereas not heating it could really bog down city staff. I would also add another burden, which is the prospect of attorney's fees if we are not in compliance. If litigation results from the Public Records Act, a prevailing requister is entitled to attorney's fees, whereas the city would not be, even if the city prevailed. So there's strong incentives to be compliant with the Public Records Act. Less cynically, there's compelling reasons to be compliant, and that is the underlying rationale of the act, which is this is democracy at work. Our business is the public's business. It should be open and transparent. And that transparency promotes better policy. So it's better government ultimately. And that policy is actually also enshrined in our constitution. So this is not just a state statute, but the California Constitution requires us to give requests a broad interpretation. So if there's ambiguity, we err on the side of complying with requests and disclosure. So now we're going to go through those individual elements that I discussed briefly. First, is it a writing? And if you ever find yourself asking, is this a writing? The answer almost invariably is going to be yes. So this is a pretty easy analysis. It basically means every means of communication that can be captured in any way. It would include emails, texts, voicemails. The concept of a writing is it's not static, and technology will expand this concept. And that ruling came from this Smith case that I cite here. It's a very recent, or it's recent and a very seminal Supreme Court case that discussed a lot of the things that I'll be talking about today. So whenever you see something in quotations here, it's usually from that Smith case. So is it a writing? Probably. Is it a public record? What are public records? The government code defines it as everything containing information relating to the conduct of the public's business, prepared, owned, used, or retained by the city, regardless of physical form. So the next few slides, I'm going to break down three concepts that we get from this definition. First, what does it mean to be prepared, owned, used, or retained by the city? Does it relate to the public's business? And what kind of form must something take to be considered a public record? So first is prepared, owned, used, or retained. It includes writings that are prepared on personal time and communicated through personal accounts. So this was one of the big issues that was involved in that Smith case. It was the city of San Jose employees communicating on personal time through their personal email and phone devices. And they contended that that meant it was not a public record. The court disagreed. So a public record is still a public record, even though you are communicating on your own phone or your own email address, what have you. The owned, used, or retained part, that includes consultants, the records maintained by city consultants, if they are available to the city. Is it relating to the public's business? This issue is perhaps a little bit trickier. The quoted language there again is from the Supreme Court decision. So this is, this could be a minefield. It's not just what the public might find interesting. So the example that the Supreme Court used was one employee calling another employee a dummy while titillating, may not be considered a public record. But one employee saying about another employee, I think he or she missed a deadline, that would probably qualify. So there's a spectrum involved here. The factors that the court discussed were obviously the content and the substance of the writing. Does it involve a matter that concerns the public about public policy? The context of the writing, like how did this discussion come up? The intended audience. So here, if the writing was addressed to perhaps supervisor or a fellow city employee, it's more likely to be considered a public record than if it was addressed to, say, a spouse or a friend with no public interest in the matter. And then finally, was the employee purporting to act within the scope of their employment? So those are the factors that control this analysis. Now, writings can also be, they can be mixed. They can be partly public business and partly not. The advice I would give here, and we'll touch on this more later, is do your best not to mix business with pleasure. Because while the personal aspects can technically be segregated from the public parts of the writing, that involves a whole lot more work, and it risks having your personal information be shared publicly. So it's best to not communicate or not mix your personal messages with your professional ones. You know, try to maintain separate email accounts and only communicate through that account if possible. So the last thing that informs whether it's a public record is it's, well, regardless of form. And so we touched on this concept earlier when we discussed, is it a writing? Here, though, I actually just want to highlight that the Public Records Act does not require the city to report things that are formless, oral conversations, or data that's not otherwise captured in a record. It doesn't require the city to create public records. The danger here, or the trick, is oftentimes when a request is received, say, for information, but not necessarily something that's already contained in a record, employees might take it upon themselves to create that record. When they do that, then it is a public record, and it must be disclosed. But there's no obligation to actually produce that record. And before, so we're going to talk about the mechanics of the Public Records Act. And before, so we're going to talk about the mechanics of the Public Records Act and quests. But first, I think it's important to digress to our document retention policy. So the the Public Records Act itself is not a document retention policy or statute, but uh, there is state law uh on the matter. So the general guideline is that public records must be maintained for at least two years. Now, there is, that's the general rule, but it's subject to many, many, many exceptions. Um, and you can find our summary of that in our uh retention schedule there, and there's the link for it. Um, some records have longer retention periods, some have shorter. It really depends on what it is, so. I bring this up because once a document is eligible for destruction, um, it helps to submit a request to uh destroy that document as soon as it is eligible. And that is because the city is not obligated to produce what it doesn't have. So if it lawfully destroys a record, it has nothing to produce. Um, and so I go back to my first slide when I mentioned the the burden on the city and the efficiency of the staff. Uh, if we're able to move through a request relatively quickly, we can reduce the amount of time that staff has to spend responding to Public Records Act requests. Uh, so now back to the Public Records Act uh itself. So how do these work? How do these requests work? Uh, first of all, anyone can request uh public records. It's not just residents. It's not just individuals. It could be pretty much anybody. Um, they can request either copies of the records or to inspect the originals where they are kept. We don't see that very often, uh but technically that that is an option of the person making the request. How do requests come in? Um, they can come in in a variety of manner. They can be um written, uh emails, letters. They can be oral. It can be a casual request, like, I'd love to see that document. The trick there is recognizing when a Records Act uh request has been received. The request must reasonably describe the records. Uh, sometimes we receive confusing requests or very broad requests. Um, in that situation, we still have an obligation to respond. And in fact, we have an obligation to assist the quester. Uh, so if the request doesn't make any sense, we can't throw our hands up and say, that doesn't make any sense. You don't get anything. There's an affirmative statutory obligation to actually assist the quester, um locate the information, the record that they are seeking. When we respond to a request, there's, there's two parts. Uh, there's a written response, which is usually a letter uh from the responding department or the city attorney's office. And then there's the disclosure of the documents themselves. So technically, those are are different parts. So addressing the written response, uh, we must indicate whether uh we intend to produce documents or whether we intend to invoke an exemption. That response has to go out within 10 days. An extension of that 10-day uh deadline is possible, but uh it's only supposed to be invoked if it's necessary. We try to avoid it, uh and we usually do avoid it. We usually get um our written responses out uh in a timely fashion. But if a request is particularly voluminous or requires a lot of time to review the information, determine whether an exemption applies, uh we will invoke uh that extension. The disclosure of documents uh technically is not due within that 10 days, but uh it must be produced. They must be produced in a reasonable timeframe. Uh, now, we try to also produce the documents with the written response, so within the 10 days. Technically not required, uh but that that is our goal. Uh, the takeaway here is that immediate response is important. Uh, these deadlines are important. There are consequences for not meeting these deadlines. Um, and so particularly when a request is is broad, uh request a lot of documents, getting on it right away is is very important. Uh, so who responds? Typically, the responses are received by uh there was the department, um, building department, planning. Uh, oftentimes, they're directed to the city attorney's office or the clerk's office. Um, and then they are given to the responding department um to to find the documents. Now, so the public employees have the responsibility for locating the responsive documents. Uh, and they also have the responsibility uh to segregate public records from personal records. So going back to what we were talking about earlier, if there's a a mixture of public and and private records, employees can make that distinction. But um if if there's a situation where uh private and personal um information is contained in the same document as public information, it would actually come on the custodian of records to redact um that that sensitive information. The takeaway here is you you probably don't want the city attorney's office going through and doing redactions on on your personal documents. So again, uh, try not to mix business with pleasure. Um, exemptions, this is the kind of the last main category and and I don't want to spend much time on it because this is not something that really should concern uh the the public agency or the or the employee um locating the documents. Rather, this is really for the city attorney's office to vet. Uh, sometimes it's obvious, though, when a privilege might apply. And so I mentioned this. Um, it would assist the city attorney's office, for instance, if um if the responding employee flagged the issue. Hey, this batch of documents contains attorney-client information. Um, hey, this contains information that is private to a third party. Uh, but other than that, that's, that's the function of the city attorney's office to determine whether there is an exemption that applies. Um, I think, I think this is my last one. Um, how is the Public Records Act enforced? Uh, it's a process called the Rite of Mandamus. Uh, I won't bore you with what that is exactly, but it's a, it's a civil action. It's, it's a lawsuit that happens relatively quickly. Uh, there's no express statute of limitations in the Public Records Act request. So again, all the more reason to uh be compliant in every way. Uh, and I mentioned attorney's fees earlier. Um, if if we found ourselves involved in litigation and lost, we would have to pay attorney's fees, but if we won, we would not be entitled to them. Uh, so it's only a downside. And there is, in fact, and again, this is perhaps a cynical view because the Public Records Act plays a very important um policy role. But uh to highlight the issue, that there is a cottage industry of attorneys and individuals who look for technical violations. They could be small violations uh and and use that as a basis for filing a lawsuit and trying to leverage uh some kind of settlement uh in which we would be um out on the hook for attorney's fees. So all the more reason to um heed the advice and be as compliant as we can. That is it for the Public Records Act. Um, I'll stop sharing, and I think my office will entertain any questions.
Good, that was a lot of excellent information. Thank you for the slides. We appreciate that. But counsel, why don't we ask our questions, then we can go out to the public and see if there are questions from our commissioners and other public members. And if there's any discussion that needs to be had, sorry about the dog background noise. If there's any discussion that needs to be had, we can do that. We'll just follow our normal procedures. Questions at this point on anything? Uh, council member Dan, please.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, city attorney's office, I appreciate that. Uh, but we've heard it all before, but if you always, you always take away with something that you don't know. Uh, my question is about neighborhood associations and council members attending uh those meetings. Uh, could you just very briefly give us a, a can we or can we not all be at a neighborhood association meeting?
And in typical lawyer fashion, I'll respond by saying there is no um boilerplate answer. So it it really depends on whether the meeting is widely advertised. So let's say it's the Monty Vista Neighborhood Association. If the public is invited to attend that meeting and it's not closed just to Monterey, Monty Vista Neighborhood Association members, and it's widely advertised, then um council members can attend. If it is the opposite, where it's closed to members only, um not advertised to the public, then um, then there could be a Brown Act problem if a quorum of the council were to show up.
So should I assume that if all four of us, or five of us is there, that we can't we can't get involved in a discussion with all five of us in that meeting, I assume?
So if it's, if it's considered an open, community-wide meeting and um permissible for all five of you to be there under the Brown Act, um that's the threshold question, then yes, you can be there, but you cannot discuss amongst yourselves um the city's business at that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. That was actually a question I had too, that so that I appreciate you bringing that up. Any other council questions at this point?
No questions for me.
Okay, all right, nope. Then, uh, and that, um and if you will, uh, open up the access to our meeting, if we invite commissioners and the public to ask questions, make a comment, and questions, we will be sure to get back to you. We'll write them down and we'll get right back to you. Maybe we'll just take the questions, accumulate them, and then answer them at the end of the public comment.
Okay, sounds good. Um, well, my first question comes from uh our Parks and Recreation Commissioner, Christian Schmidt. And uh, Christian, welcome. If you can unmute yourself, perfect.
There we go. I I must have, as walking around, I must have uh raised my hand. I apologize for that, uh, because I actually uh absorbed a lot, but I didn't have any questions. So I apologize for my, my hand-raised icon.
No problem. It's good to see you and glad to see you and other parks commissioners here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, uh, maybe our Measure PS Oversight Committee member Carol Trogajian has a question or comment. And uh, welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Um, so, quick question. When you said if if you attended, say, that council or attended NCIP meetings, what, in what time would they be closed meetings? I understand that city council has closed meetings, but aren't all of our Measure PS and CIP, aren't all of those meetings, public meetings? Uh, what, in what instance would they be a closed meeting?
That, that's a really great question. Um, the closed sessions are um primarily for the city council. I'm not aware of ever holding a closed session for any other border commission because it falls outside of the jurisdiction of those bodies. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Uh, we also have Ellen. I think this is Ellen McEwen. If you could please confirm your last name, we'd appreciate it.
Hi there, Ellen McEwen here. Thanks for recognizing me. Um, a question came up um regarding the recreation trail. And we formed subcommittees on various subjects. And Dennis McCarthy and I were going to meet for coffee and try and brainstorm some way to separate pedestrians from bicycles. And then we were concerned that maybe we couldn't do that. And it's come up several times about whether um non-quorum numbers of the Parks and Rec Commission can meet to discuss our our various um uh concerns outside of our regular meetings.
So the answer to that question depends on um whether the people meeting are a part of a standing committee or an ad hoc committee. And if it's a standing committee, you can meet. If it's less than a quorum, it just needs to follow the agenda, posting requirements and Brown Act requirements um and be accessible to the public. Um, if it's an ad hoc committee, then um it's advisory only. It's less than a quorum. It does not have continuing subject matter jurisdiction. So I think the issue with um the Rec Park Commission members on occasion is that they were having continuing subject matter jurisdiction potentially over um a topic. So if it were two people or or less than a quorum of the commission um addressing a single subject year after year after year, such as the Rec Trail, just hypothetically speaking, um, with no um short-term duration in sight, then that might be a standing committee um that would be subject to the Brown Act. On the other hand, if um there's an ad hoc committee that is advisory only, not decision-making, and is less than a quorum, that has no continuing subject matter jurisdiction and is of a short duration and and um the duration issue, some cities have uh adopted criteria for the duration component, say, a year or less, or six months or less is probably more common. So it, when we say short duration, we do mean it needs to be um brief. Um, and I believe there's an Attorney General opinion that has approved a six-month duration. So it probably wouldn't be advisable to go beyond that with a temporary committee. And um additional members cannot attend um that either if it's an ad hoc committee. Um, so if there's an ad hoc committee, then another member of the Rec Park Commission couldn't, couldn't attend that. So it's, it again, in a lawyerly way, we, we say the answer depends because it usually does depend on the full set of facts. Um, and so if there's specifics, we're happy to address those. Um, just give my office a call.
Let's see if I could expand on that a tiny bit. If you, Parks and Rec uh Commission had a standing committee and its job was all things recreation trail, and it was just permanent. So anything that came up with respect to the recreation trail would be a standing committee, but the one that Dr. Ellen just pointed out, that was focused towards an objective, a a single subject, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
So it was, would be considered an ad hoc because once, once that committee had done its work, then no longer existed because its objective had been met.
That, that sounds like that may be the case, especially if it was for six months or less and um was a single-subject topic, a unique topic, not a a standing jurisdictional um oversight, then that might very well be an ad hoc committee.
Okay, but when in doubt, call your office, right?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. All right, Nat. Great questions, great answers.
Yep. Thank you again. Let's see who else we have, and thanks, uh, Dr. McEwen, who's on our Parks Commission. Let me disable uh lower hand. Uh, our next person is Esther Malkin, and Esther, uh, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I think I can't recall what I heard in the presentation, if this applies to staff or not. Um, but I'm curious about um meetings, for example, the one that happens annually with the Monterey Commercial Properties Association, or whatever they're called, um, that hosts this event that used to be called the State of the City when it was open to the public at, at City Hall, that somehow or another ended up happening at the conference center. And then after, I guess this year, um, it ended up being virtual, but um we don't know how many, who attended, um, because we weren't allowed to attend or invited. So my question is, um, this public outreach that supposedly is supposed to happen for these, these, these individual groups that ha- have their meetings, that's, that council members and staff may, may attend, um, is it, I mean, are there parameters for that outreach? Uh, I attended the, the meeting that they did a couple of years ago at the conference center only because someone told me about it, that's part of McCoa. But it, it, it was technically, I guess, posted on Facebook or something, but I, I didn't know about it. There were very few residents there, um, other than elected officials and um, business owners and commercial, commercially, you know, involved people. And so, you know, I've been questioning that particular meeting because it used to be called the State of the City, which the State of the City is something that interests all residents. And there was no recording of it to share with residents afterwards. I actually took a recording of it um when I attended in person at the conference center. But this past year, I was, um, when I questioned it, it was, I was told that well, anybody can request us to have that same meeting in their individual neighborhoods, which seems kind of unrealistic if 15 or so neighborhoods were to ask you guys to do this meeting. And really, the State of the City pertains to everybody who lives and works in the city. So I guess my question is, what exactly is the, is considered a public meeting? And, you know, what has to be done to actually make it, make the public aware of it? And if the And if the, I guess, the Brown Act, whether or not it applies to city staff at all, does that make sense?
It does. So I'll try to take your questions in order, maybe reverse order. So the Brown Act, city staff cannot violate the Brown Act. It does not apply to city staff. City staff could be an intermediary and cause a violation of the Brown Act, so we avoid that. But public officials are legislative bodies subject to the Brown Act. The second question, private organizations, such as the Monterey Commercial Property Owners Association, are private organizations. They're not legislative bodies subject to the Brown Act. So they don't have public accessibility or posting or agenda requirements, and they don't have to allow the public to attend their meetings. So whether you're the Monterey Commercial Property Owners Association or you're the, I don't know, Boys and Girls Club meeting, or Kiwanis Club, or there are certain clubs that are just private, and they don't have to allow everyone to attend their private functions. And they're moreover not subject to the Brown Act. Those are distinct from business improvement districts when they hold their meetings, such as the Old Monterey Business Association. Those are subject to the Brown Act. Those entities are. So hopefully, that answers your question. But I think the State of the City address is a separate issue, and that could be presented at public meetings, and it could also be presented at private meetings by invitation. There's no restriction on that under the law.
And it doesn't matter how many council members attend, even if it's within that club, or whatever you want to call it?
It would depend. So if, and it's sort of the same answer I was giving to Councilmember Albert on the neighborhood associations, on whether it would be a prohibited meeting under the Brown Act or not. So if it's a closed meeting, then the council members would need to be cognizant.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Esther. And we'll go to Kurt Tipton. Kurt, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. I had a question about the 15% change in the law as far as the NCIP committee. In my case, is the 15% that would be the entire downtown neighborhood? Or just 15% of the houses and properties within 500 feet of my property?
Correct. So if the only interest you have is your residential property there, then it just looks at 15% of those within the jurisdiction?
So it's the entire downtown neighborhood association?
If that's the jurisdiction you represent, yes.
Yes. Okay. And then the other question is, is there a distinction if it is a, let's say, Ellis Arrow Park or Jack's Park? If there's an improvement in there, my property is well within 500 feet of that. But that is a citywide issue. So does that 15% still count, or does it go to the citywide type of evaluation?
So I'm not exactly sure where Ellis Arrow Park falls within the different neighborhoods. But really, the issue is if whatever project, whatever neighborhood that may be in, if that's within 500 feet of real property that you own, it doesn't matter how we characterize it as a neighborhood. If it's within 500 feet, then they're going to look at the jurisdiction you represent, which I guess in your case is the downtown. And then if your only interest is your primary residence there, then it would look at the 15% of residential properties in that jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great question, Kurt. And we're going to go to Jean Rash. Hi, Jean.
Hi. I think my question is, are standing committees advertised by the city in their iSearch agenda? And the event was, the NCIP had their audit committee meeting, of which I think there are only three sitting members. And of course, a lot of the NCIP commissioners, myself included, attended. Not a quorum, but the question did come up from Rick Huer, our lead commissioner, our chair, whether the Brown Act would be applicable in that situation. I'm thinking, if I'm understanding it, that it's a standing committee. And if it was advertised, I guess, by the city, then it's really public. And even with more than a quorum, we would be okay. Am I right?
I think, if I'm understanding the question correctly, I understand the finance committee of the NCIP to be a standing committee. There was an agenda posting compliance with the Brown Act. And additional members could attend. Let me just double-check this, so I don't confuse myself. Sorry. Others can attend, but they can only observe and can't participate. Other members of the NCIP.
Can't make comments?
They cannot make comments or participate. They can just observe.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jean. All right, let's hear from Jerry Lynn. If you could share your last name with us, we'd appreciate it as well.
Okay. Are you speaking to me? Geraldine? Thank you. Yes, I appreciated the clarification, because I wondered why some people would state their name or address, and others didn't. And I thought, why isn't that consistent? And so I appreciated learning that that is entirely up to people that come and choose to ask questions or present to our meetings. And I thought that was very interesting to me. My question is about the public participation. And I didn't see the form long enough to catch the part about you must have a quorum present in the city. Does that mean physically located in the city for a meeting? Or is that just, what does a quorum mean in that?
Right.
For Zoom, for example.
Right. For Zoom, those location rules have been suspended right now. So, for example, a quorum need not be within the city of Monterey right now to hold this meeting. You could be in many different counties or states even, and be conducting this by Zoom, which is not the typical, that's just a temporary rule during the pandemic. And maybe that gets codified in some of the pending legislation we discussed, and maybe it doesn't, so we'll have to stay tuned. But for now, you do not need to be within the city limits on Zoom while having this meeting.
Thank you very much. I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission. Thanks.
Thank you, Jerry Lynn.
Jerry Lynn brings up a good point. I'm on some outside agencies. And a lot of times, people say, well, please state your name for the record. And they really can't ask them to do that. They should say, please state your name for the record if you wish.
Yeah, you can always ask, but you can't compel them to comply.
Exactly. Right.
Good point. Well, we have Sandy Freeman, who's volunteered her name here. And Sandy, if you could ask your question or provide your comment.
I'm unuttered. I wanted to respond to Esther Malkin's concern that she wasn't posted or notified of important meetings held by the city. And we get these complaints often, not so much now that we're doing Zoom meetings, but during the personal meetings, where somebody from the public will say, gosh, I didn't even know this meeting was taking place, or this topic was being raised, and why wasn't it posted? Well, in most cases, you have to look for it. The individual agendas of the ARC or the PC, you have to look for the item on the agenda. But for something as important as a State of the City meeting, I'm not sure when this event was that Esther was mentioning. But since the pandemic started, the city of Monterey has put out a daily newsletter. Now it's mostly weekly, from the city of Monterey, informing everyone of things that are going on. And it's not just a Chamber of Commerce piece. Important stuff is being noted. All people who receive it are being notified of any important thing that's going on with the city. So this is not so much an answer to Esther's question as it is a plug for this important newsletter that's being put out by the city of Monterey. So all individuals would be able to know that there was going to be a State of the Union speech at the conference center.
And Sandy's talking about it's a city of Monterey update. It's every day. And we're up to 227, I want to say, something like that.
Yeah, 227.
Yep. Hey, I remembered something. All right. It's really outstanding. It's so informative with links to everything. Yeah. Gracie has a question. She wants to know when she's going to get her snacks.
That's right.
Okay, Nat, go ahead.
You're late for dinner, Dad.
Well, thank you, Sandy. And in terms of those who've have not yet spoken, all of the, we have no new speakers.
Okay, well, we certainly, again, thank all of the people who called in with their great questions, whether they're commissioners or not, and they're really excellent answers. So I'm grateful for that. I think we can, first of all, welcome Councilmember Tyler Williamson. Hi, Tyler. And once again, unless there's any more questions, we'll go to closed session, but thank our legal team for really a good presentation, succinct. And they are there for any questions that you might have. And the standing ad hoc committees, probably a question that each staff member and each commission needs to make sure that they're following those rules.
Yes, we're happy to help at any time, and we appreciate everyone's participation today. We'd like to go and visit individual boards, but with the pandemic and everything, this seemed to be the most efficient way to do it. Laws do change on a regular basis, so please don't hesitate to contact us, and we will try to promptly address your questions. And thank you for having us speak today.
So unless there are any council questions, all right, I don't see any public comment on our closed session item. Nat, is there anyone who wanted to speak on our closed session item?
Let's see. I don't see any hands raised for our closed session item.
Okay, well, then, at this point, thank you, everyone, and staff, public, commissioners, council, for making this another really interesting, productive meeting. And we'll see you at our closed session.